In this November the seventh, Board of Alderman meetings hereby called to order. I remind all the participants that this meeting is live streamed and recorded on the city's YouTube channel. With that, I'd like to ask Alderman Gil Earhart if he would open with a prayer and then followed by a pledge allegiance led by me. Please stand.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. My most gracious God and heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening. Thank you, Lord, for your presence among us and thank you, Lord, for this beautiful day. Lord, I would pray that we'd be reminded of the peace that needs to come upon this world. You're our Creator, you're our sustainer. And Lord, no matter which side of the political spectrum one may be on, there's just something wrong when innocent people are killed like they were. So, Lord, I just pray that your hand will be upon us, that we would make good decisions, peaceful decisions in this world and as leaders. And also, Lord, that you continue to bless our city the way that you have, that you've protected us, our fire and police and city citizens that service and work with us. Lord, I just pray that you would continue to bless us and sustain us the way that you have, providing each and every day for us. Let us look forward to this Thanksgiving season, be grateful for what we have, for family and friends and our health, and bless this meeting tonight according to your will. Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Madam Clerk, would you conduct roll call?
Aldridge.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Dickerson.
Here.
Earhart.
Here.
Hamilton.
Here.
Henderson.
Here.
Wallace.
Here.
All present, so quorum is established. Thank you, Ms. Stewart. The board we have before you, the minutes of the last board meeting of October the seventeenth. Any questions on these minutes or any motions? Alderman Wallace motion to approve. Is there a second? Second Alderman, Hamilton. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Before I do the mayor's award, I'd like to recognize the Honorable David Wallace on his birthday today. Happy birthday, Mr. Wallace.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Happy birthday.
Ms. James, would you come forward?
Good evening.
Good. It is my pleasure to give the mayor's award this month to Ms. Heather James. We had several nominations, but some of them very detailed. Ms. James has excelled above and beyond, and I read the nomination from Jason Gambon, the director of planning. Please accept this nomination of land development technician Heather James for the mayor's award. After a planning commission meeting on Tuesday night that adjourned at eight forty-five P.M., she worked overtime yesterday to reconcile the accounting for an agenda item the Board of Alderman will review at the October seventeenth meeting. This involved detailed analysis to match invoices to seventy-six mowing cleanups the code enforcement office has managed this year at a cost of over forty-five thousand dollars. This is an example of the work that Heather routinely does in exceeding her job duties to coordinate interdepartmental efforts between the plan department, office, and those of code enforcement, building, engineering, finance, city clerk, administration, and that doesn't even include my intercom calls for just a little bit of information every few days, but thank you very much. Heather's an exemplary team player who brings a wide range of skills and knowledge to city operations. The diligence and work ethic she has provided to our city on a daily basis is outstanding. So, thank you, and with that, one hundred, two hundred, and fifty dollars, donated dollars, non-tax dollars.
Thank you so much.
And Ms. Doctor, she's here. Is that correct?
I should have brought this down with me. My apologies. This is a proclamation, whereas the World Prematurity Day was created on November the seventeenth, two thousand and eleven by the March of the Nine to raise awareness for the millions of children every year who are born prematurely, and whereas World Prematurity Day was created to shine a light on the risk and hardship created by premature births, cost-effective improvement solutions, and spreading compassion for families who have experienced premature births, and whereas every year the March of the Nine issued a report card that assessed the efforts to reduce premature births in the United States, unfortunately, our country is losing ground in this battle for healthy babies. In fact, our overall rating is A.C., showing the widely gulf of differences in several rates, excuse, survival rates depending on racial background and socioeconomic condition of the mother. And whereas premature births affect one in seven babies in this city. So, the county has a twelve point seven preterm birth rate and receiving F-rating on the March of the Nine report card. And whereas organizations such as Zeta Five, Beta Story Incorporated, and Psi Beta, Zeta Chapter for the Southern, and the City by Olive Branch are working as part of the Healthy Moms, Strong Women Campaign to improve the health of moms and babies. Now, therefore, I cannot allow, and prepare the City by Olive Branch and Board of Alderman hereby proclaim that on the seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, a war on premature birth is set.
Mayor's updates, board, I will not read all of these, but I just wanted to point out a couple of things to you that's going on. Obviously, TVA has started the work in our city park off of Old Goodman Road. They have several different phases. You've got them listed, phase one, two, and three. Looks like they'll be working through mid-April to complete that TVA transmission line going through the side of our city park over close to Parkwood Hospital. James Campbell Park Director and Jay Nichols have worked on communications, getting that out, and the main priority is safety of our residents that are going in and out, and our employees going in and out. That's a big priority because there's a lot of work being done there. On COO update, you see the number of building permits, two sixty-seven building inspections and two hundred twenty-seven permits. Pleased to announce on the public works item that our director, Cole Festmeyer, was selected to serve as one of eight board members on the Mississippi eight-one-one board, and that's a statewide board, so congratulations, Mr. Festmeyer, for serving on that. We appreciate your serving. You see some of the work done. I won't go over all those, but I will go over water leaks. We've had eighty-four water leaks that was worked on last month, one burst water main, maintenance associated with fifty-six lift stations, and some different issues that you see being worked on. All seven water plants are pumping at full steam at a hundred percent, and that's positive, but it also creates some opportunities as well. Sometimes the water pressure's up tremendously, so we're trying to find the happy medium there, but a lot going on with water. Gas department, you know, other cities don't have gas locates because they don't have a gas company. Another private company takes care of gas on the other side of the county, but our team did one thousand six hundred and twenty-five locates. So, that's where contractors, construction worker, home builder, commercial builder is going to dig or do some work. So, we have to go make sure they know where the gas lines are, and that's a lot of locates in one month. You see the major subdivision projects of the planning department. Code enforcement initiated a hundred and thirty-five cases, and if you look further down, the previous months, only eight properties were in violation and only five ended up being court cases. So, once again, indicating that most of the people that have minor issues, they will clean up and take care of the problems just with code enforcement, communicating with them, and letting them know what's expected out of the property owner. Excuse me, Weston House had forty-three individuals tour the house recently, and eighty seniors attended on senior day. They had a blast. I know several of y'all may have been there, but it was quite a blast they had at the seniors' house that day on the lawn. Weston House participated in trunk or treat. We estimated six thousand people attended trunk or treat. That was the best guestimate we could have based on drones flying over and those kind of things, but very crowded, lots of people there. I've never seen more. I don't know if y'all have. I don't think I've ever seen more people in one area in our city. Two thousand dollars was raised for the American Cancer Society. Senior citizens, senior center hosted a Walk for the Cure. Over two hundred participants walked for the cure at our city park on the track. Airport department is still amassing numbers. We will go over one hundred thousand activities this year, which is just amazing. I.T. department's upgraded some software, office software that helps us all. And then the next page after that, you'll see a thank you letter from Ms. Caitlin Marie Hadley, thanking the board for their scholarship donation that was made on her behalf. October and November, Olive Branch Police Department Public Relations events to show you what's been going on there from that standpoint. I direct your attention also to the page. I should have numbered these, but the page after that, which is the spreadsheet, just to show you how that, that I guess would be the last sheet to show you how we're trending as a city on airport fuel, surpassing FY twenty-one, FY twenty-two, into FY twenty-three. Now, this does include a little bit, I guess it'd be the first week of November, but you can see the trend's good there. Airport rental fees, you can see the trend there. Pretty much about the same, but overall, airport fees up from FY twenty-one, four seventy-five point one, FY twenty-two, five hundred twenty-one point seven, to FY twenty-three, five hundred thirty-five point one. And then you see the revenues from the court system as well, and what's taking place as far as fine collections each year increasing. So, the teams have done a good job being good stewards of the money that's been entrusted with us. I have one more item for you, if you don't mind. I have a memo to you, just to, I'll share this tomorrow at Chamber of Commerce luncheon, but effective October the first this year, we have the lowest municipal property tax rate in DeSoto County. So, Horn Lake has fifty mills, South Haven forty-six point seven eight, forty-one for Walls, forty point seven six for Hernanda, and same old thirty-eight point five for Olive Branch, which y'all have managed to continue and keep for the last nine years, which is really awesome. It shows that if a person has a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar assessed property value home, if it's assessed at two hundred and fifty thousand, divide that by the number of days in the year, you're looking at two dollars and sixty-four cents a day if you own a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house to live in a city with police, fire, EMS, city parks, recreation facilities, libraries, senior center, code enforcement, planning, airport, public works, animal shelter, communications on a daily basis from our city on social media, and every time we turn around, there's another city-sponsored event. So, if you see the chart, for the same two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house in Olive Branch, it'd be nine hundred and sixty-three dollars. And if you continue up the chart, you'll see what other cities would be as high as one thousand two hundred and fifty for that same house. And obviously, if the home is a half a million dollar home instead of two fifty, then you'd double those numbers, but they'd double with the other cities as well. So, the city's done a great job managing the finances of the city and the debt ratio in order to provide this great outstanding tax rate. Two of the five cities increased taxes this year, starting October one, but fortunately, we did not. So, those are the things I wanted to share with you. Any questions on those items?
Mayor, I'd just say that's quite impressive, and thank you for that data. It's a good place to live, work, play, and worship.
Yep.
I think our staff's doing a great job. We appreciate it.
Yep, thank you. Wonderful job. It didn't just start happening this year or last year. It's been an ongoing process that the city's done and administrations previously. It's just a very positive thing. It really is. Thank you. Next item on the consent, this is the consent agenda. Any items on the consent agenda that need to be discussed? And if not, any motions? Motion. Motion to approve as presented by Alderman-at-Large Collins. Is there a second? Second, Ms. Henderson. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I will point out, you see things for Shop with a Cop on there this year, like we've had in the past, but proceeds have came in so good this year, we're going to have two different event nights for Shop with a Cop. So, it'll be two different groups of children will get the benefit from that program just because of donations, which is great. Planning Commission, new business. This is a public hearing date for consideration and action on motion declaring the condition of the following properties to be amendments to the public health and safety and directing either the city staff or contract labor to clean the property forthwith. I believe only the last two, if I'm reading that right, Mr. Gambon, are still in need of discussion. Is anybody here from the Jayla Goodwin or Terry Perkins family or anyone associated with ninety-nine twenty-five Murray Cove or six three three eight Oak Run Drive East? Anyone here associated with those properties? Mr. Gambon?
Yes, sir. These are just some slides showing the location. This is ninety-nine twenty-five Morrie Cove. This is Goodman Road East, and Morrie Cove is this road right here past Dogwood Manor, and you can see the front yard condition there, the backyard a little bit high. And then, location map for sixty-three thirty-eight Oak Run East, Hacks Cross Road. This is Oak Leaf Drive over about a half mile or so. You can see our subject property on Oak Run, and the front yard of this property's been mowed, but you can see the condition of the backyard in this photo that's shown on the PowerPoint slide. And as of today, the condition of those properties hasn't changed.
First of all, super excited to be back. Thank you guys so much for approving this last year. We hope you guys were happy with how it turned out. Real briefly, I don't think anyone ever got a formal summary of last year. Is that correct? Does anyone get any of our brief numbers from last year that you guys recall? I know we did a brief follow-up with the mayor at February, and I think the aldermen were privy to that. So, real quick, we had over twenty-three employees last year, forty-six volunteers, nineteen performance groups, all of whom were paid from an arts standpoint. So, definitely benefited the arts. Hundred and twenty-four individual singers and musicians. We had eighteen people from different food and beverage groups like Funky Monkey Food Trucks, things like that. We had five people running shops, including the Lego Shop and Pink's Coffee House. We had forty-seven local businesses represented last year, fifteen national brands. We did win the McCully Award in two thousand and twenty-three. We had over three hundred and thirty-two light displays in the show. It's over four hundred and one thousand LEDs. It's three and a half miles of extension cord. That's two miles of decorations. We hosted four successful wedding proposals, fourteen thousand guests, ninety-eight dogs. There were quite a few special event nights, the biggest of which for coming into this year, and this will kind of lead us into where we're going to talk about. We had lower ticket prices this year. That was something we really tried to push for, so it was an average of about fifteen percent last year. Kids' tickets were, I think, twelve dollars, and now they're nine on the website, so a big, big drop there. Adult tickets went from sixteen dollars down to fourteen dollars online, so another nice drop there for families trying to be more accessible. We also added that season pass that's available for thirty-five dollars, where if you come to New Year's and one other night, it pays for itself. If you just come to the special events, it makes each visit two dollars. So, we're very excited about that. Military now come for free as well this year, so that's firefighters, police officers, teachers, nurses, first responders in DeSoto County who work with the cities, and military, active or retired, all now come for free to the light show. Accessibility, we're working on some stuff. We have some better cable ramps this year. We've reached out to some of the hotels to see if they can lend us wheelchairs to publicly kind of address this issue. I know we're not wanting to do what some of the other light shows do, which is where an elderly person would pay a ticket to come in and then have to rent twenty dollars to have an electric scooter or something like that. Obviously, that poses some risks with the lake, so that's one of the reasons we're trying to find some wheelchairs that if you know anybody who could loan some for the show, we'd love to have them where the elderly can just ask at the gate and borrow one for free. That's something we're trying to do as well. We have reduced dates this year, so that's all up on the website. More weather-friendly policies. If you buy a ticket, you can come any night of the show. New Year's is the only night that's affected by price, but every other night's the exact same price. You buy a ticket, you don't have to call us, you don't have to change it, just come any other night. And then there's some buses and group options, but the biggest thing, I think, was some special event stuff and then the request for some special thing. So, what questions can I answer regarding what's in that amendment? Would you want me to run through them? Yes, ma'am? Yes, ma'am. So, if you want to come on a Tuesday and it rains that Tuesday, you can just come on Wednesday. No calling, no rescheduling, no rebooking, no hassle, nothing like that. And then every single special event night, our rain policy, we announce the rain date already. So, every special event night's on a Saturday. So, if you're supposed to happen that night and we reschedule it, you know when you bought your ticket, it's going to happen on that Sunday.
Russ, I had a question for you. You know that I've called you today. Mayor, I spoke with you earlier about it today. I wanted to bring it before the board. This kind of got to us in a formal package, obviously, this weekend, and roughly a month ago, we were aware of some of the changes you had requested. And I wanted to ask you this when it comes to open container and alcohol. I'll be the first to say I'm not opposed to alcohol because I will partake of some at the right occasions. I guess my concern is that in a Christmas event, because it is a religious and spiritual holiday, where you not only have adults, you have children and grandchildren, how would you feel about having alcohol served in a designated area? I know you have to control it and somewhat police it, and I think we will help to some degree because we will have city policemen on site. And possibly even to help with that, have a specialized logo cut by your vendor or something different where it's easier to identify. I just personally, again, don't have a problem with alcoholic beverages. I just think in this type of event, it should be limited, just like the cigar or tobacco night. You have a designated night or designated area, and I wanted to ask if you would be willing to work with us on that capacity to have a designated area?
We're absolutely willing to attempt to work. I know, again, this came late to the alderman, that this was an idea that we had, I think, back in February that we were trying to work towards, which is when we order custom displays for sponsors like the Ale House, things like that, and so we're setting up things like that as we speak. It's something we'd like to work for. It's something that unfortunately, in all honesty, I can't guarantee that we can police because from that standpoint, the way the show's set up, even with mugs, we don't have the staff to necessarily keep everyone right there in the plaza, right in front of the stage, which is where we have the Ale House planning to, planning to set up if this is approved with the open container. So, something that we'd absolutely be asking him to say, hey, because again, you called me this afternoon about this, and I tried to think of some of the stuff we could do proactively, would be to have him say, hey, please try to keep it in the plaza. I know that from, to back up real quick, a couple of things I want to make sure that we all know. We have partnered with, since we span, back up, since we span so many holidays, including New Year's Eve, including Thanksgiving weekend, some of these bigger holidays, including Christmas as well. One of the things that we're trying to do is have festivities that fit all of those holidays. Also, my family's background is from Germany, and so they lived in Germany for five years, so I was very much influenced by their stories of walking through the Christmas markets in Germany as a family and seeing other families out there with, whether that's a drink or a beer or a glass of Gluvine, whatever that looks like, and it just never an issue. Obviously, my family drinks. It was not an abuse thing in my house, so it wasn't something that I necessarily had exposure to in a negative way from that standpoint. But I do think it is something that on Christmas Eve, we've been specifically conscious of as we've partnered with Love Worth Finding Ministries this year, the Adrian Rogers Organization and Broadcast, as well as Compel Church. They're working with us on our Christmas Eve special homily that's going to happen in the park where we do the digital candle lighting. Last year, it was iced out. We weren't able to do it, but this year, they have partnered with us to really kind of make that a much bigger presence and event. On that night, there will be no alcohol present in the park. We're not serving it. We're not allowing it. It won't be there for that special homily. So, we are trying to acknowledge that and also keep up to date with some of the trends we're seeing with other theme parks as guests are looking for that. So, I don't know if that answers your question from the standpoint of it's...
To some degree. Will you be open on Christmas Day?
No, sir.
Okay, just Christmas Eve on Sunday?
Christmas Eve is the Saturday that we're honoring because Christmas Eve is actually, we don't think many people will be in attendance that night.
Which is on Sunday, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And then that Saturday is when we're partnering with Love Worth Finding and Compel Church.
I appreciate where you're coming from. Of course, you mentioned February, talking to the city. I was not aware of this until roughly three, four weeks ago. Could you not rope that area off, more than just saying, hey, don't take that out in the public? There's got to be more control than that. Is there a way you could promote it, put a roping in that area, and again, have a staff person there rather than just, because you know if you mention it, nobody's going to honor staying in that area? I guess I'm looking for more definitive answers to what you can do to contain it in that area.
I, as of right now, we don't have the, we don't have it in our budget for this year. It's something we could have planned for more had we known sooner. And I really wish I had a better answer than that, but I don't as of right now. With the vote being tonight and with the event being in fifteen days and with us talking on the phone as of two hours ago, I don't have a better answer. I'm sorry.
Mr. Lehman, do you plan to serve it in the area where you had the food vendors last time over by the stage? Do you plan to do that over by the tennis courts on the parking lot? Mr. Lehman, do you plan to serve it in the area where you had the food vendors last time over by the stage? Do you plan to do that over by the tennis courts on the parking lot?
Yes, sir.
Do you think there might be some opportunities for some signage there to that, to show that it's an area for alcohol or alcohol accepted in that area where you're serving it?
I believe it's something we can definitely promote and try to encourage. It's just something that with this, I can't guarantee. I would not feel honest guaranteeing that to the city with what we currently have budgeted for staff and layout.
Let me ask you something. I really don't have a problem with the alcohol being served, but could you require it to be in cups? I mean, are they going to be walking around with a beer can in their hand?
No, sir. It will not be, it will not be just a can. It will be the Ale House. It'll be similar. I believe they were serving for the Mardi Gras festival here in the Old Town. They had their food trucks set up. It'll be similar to that.
I would have first walk around with a cup, you know, whether by a canned beer or draft beer.
Yes, sir. It will be on cups.
The nights that I was there, the night of the fireworks show, I guess, as New Year's Eve were there about, I know it was served that there and I know there were regger cups. I didn't see any cans or bottles. I don't know if you plan to do the same thing. I mean, it was just a plastic cup about like this. This is water. But it was a plastic cup like this. I mean, that's just what I recall.
We're talking about beer.
Beer and wine, is that correct?
Beer and wine. Yes, sir.
And by your own, I guess, admission of words, then on December twenty-third, fourth and fifth, the fourth and, you'll be open Christmas Eve, Sunday night, but nothing will be served on that night. Is that correct?
Currently, the night we have blocked off is the twenty-fourth. If you'd also like us to block off the twenty-fifth, that's something we'd be open to. But that's not the, because most people will either have actual Christmas Eve service at their church that night. We're, we, last year, we got iced out on that night as well. We lost that Saturday and that Sunday. And so, we have no idea what attendance will be. And it might be a night that we're closed next year in general anyway.
I would be willing to concede, and not that I have the authoritative vote to do it by myself anyway, but if you would block off the twenty-third, fourth and fifth, that Christmas weekend with no alcohol and then, because I think you've told me that the twenty-fourth, you're not going to be open serving anyway. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. The twenty, so Christmas, Christmas Day, the twenty-fifth, we're not open.
They're going to be closed.
We'll be closed.
The twenty-fourth, which is Sunday.
Twenty-fourth is a Sunday, yes, sir.
Which is Christmas Eve.
Yes, sir. We were going to be open that night. And then our special event is the twenty-third. Yeah, with the rain night as the twenty-fifth. So, obviously, if it got moved, then we wouldn't have alcohol that night anyway. But we can, I believe we can go ahead and work that out with the Ale House to not have any of those three days.
If you would do that, I would feel much better. I think we could appease everybody that way saying, this holy weekend, twenty-third, fourth and fifth, there's no alcohol outside of that. Put up some signs, keep it in this area, just be respectful and I could live with that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Oh, the rest of the board, I understand Alderman Earhart's motion. Any discussion on that? Is the board in concert? You agree with that or you? Sir, you fine with that? Okay, everybody good? So, the twenty-third, twenty-fourth, you're going to be closed anyway. And the twenty-fifth, no alcohol. And the other times, you'll be having it in a plastic cup, no bottles and no cans. Is that...
Do you need that in a formal motion?
Is that your motion?
Yeah, I would make a motion to accept this amendment as written, with one exception, and that's no alcohol to be served to open containers on the twenty-third, fourth and fifth.
And generally, Mayor, before we get a second, just for Claire to say, typically, what we would do is table this, reduce it to writing, bring it back to the next meeting, given our calendar and where we are timewise. Board, if you'll look in the packet that I provided you, that amendment number three, second page of the, first page is a memo from a, second page is page one of the proposed amendment number three. And what I would do is just make this as a, I would change that paragraph four under article four, where it makes references to the date, during the dates of the event, there'll be alcoholic beverages sold on site. And I would just make reference somewhere in the Word doc to the exclusion of those three dates, twenty-third, twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth of December. And Russ, I don't think that that would, if we do it in a way that didn't change the paging, where you would not have to resign it.
Okay, yes, sir.
If the motion passes.
Thank you.
So, Mayor, you have a motion. We would need a second.
Any, is there a second on that to amend it based on Mr. Earhart's input, second motion, to the motion by Ms. Hamilton? Any further discussion? All in favor of approval based on, and that motion being included? If you're in favor of that, vote aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Just curious, you're going to use the same fireworks vendor? It's not a concern? It's just a great show?
Yes, sir. We have a three-year contract with him. So, he will be back and it's a brand-new show. It's going to be awesome.
Best light, best fireworks show that I've seen in a while.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Russ, thank you for your understanding. I appreciate it and I wish you a lot of luck and hope it goes great.
Thank you so much.
With no rainouts or snowouts.
Appreciate all the support, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good day.
Item number two, consideration of recommendation from Andy Swims, city engineer, to refund Exeter Property Group in the amount of twenty thousand, two hundred and forty dollars and fifty cents due to completion of all improvements for one-two-one-three-eight Forest Park Drive, Forest Park Phase Two, and release them from the maintenance agreement. They've simply done what they were supposed to do. Is that right, Mr. Swims?
That's correct. We're fine. We recommend the release of that maintenance agreement.
Any discussion or motions? Mr. Wallace's motion. Is there a second? Second, Ms. Aldridge. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Item three, consideration of recommendation from city engineer, still Andy Swims, to refund Pleasant Hill Land and Development Company Incorporated, Mr. Barry Bridgeforth, in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars due to completion of all improvements for Robinson Crossing Subdivision, Section C, Phase Three, Area Three, and release them from the maintenance agreement due to satisfactory completion.
Same thing. This is an area that was actually in the county and we, it was brought in by the annexation and, but all the improvements have been done. So, we're recommending the release of this letter of credit.
Any questions or motions?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Ms. Hamilton, is there a second?
Second. Ms. Henderson, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Item four, consideration of recommendation from Andy Swims, city engineer, for changes to the current speed bump policy. I can just at least throw out a, tee this thing up and we discuss it as much as we need to. But the recommendation is basically for us to retract our speed bump policy and rescind it with the understanding that if police and fire and the city engineers say that it needs to be a speed bump, that there'll be a speed bump put in. Basically, we haven't done a speed bump in a year. The last time we did a speed bump, we got multiple claims for damages to a car and paid for one, didn't pay for, didn't have to pay for the others. But nobody seems to like them other than the people who's, it's right in front of their house, they like them, but nobody else likes speed bumps. The two across from it like it, nobody else likes it. A lot of other cities have put a moratorium on them as well, mainly because of the delay in police, fire and EMS vehicles and damage to those vehicles. When they go over the speed bump, it damages their vehicles. Is, I guess, a decent summary, but if I'm missing anything, I'm...
Does it eliminate the speed bump packet that the city does?
The ones we already have, we would leave. And then when they deteriorate, we wouldn't put any more unless police, fire and engineering say we need another one there. This process of going and getting seventy-five percent of your neighbors to sign that say you need a speed bump, that's kind of archaic. And unless you're pretty much liked in the neighborhood, you're probably not going to get seventy-five percent of the people to agree to sign anything. They're probably not even going to open their door in today's environment. So, that's kind of antiquated. If they really worked, we'd have three hundred and eighty-three of them because we've got three hundred and eighty-three miles of roadways. We'd have one every mile. But they work right there and if people speed again, once they get beyond them, they're just not proven to be effective. It's the staff's thought. It's based on input. I know Chief Cox is here. He had input. Chief Easton had input. Engineering had input. Have I left anything out, Mr. Swims?
Well, I put the policy in here in case y'all wanted to go back and remind yourselves of kind of how we do the policy. And I put in red some of the things so that you could kind of quickly look at it. So, the input from the police and fire department is a part of what we do. We're just talking about kind of making that the beginning, I guess, of when we start looking at requirements for speed bump that we have a committee and we talk about their use and need. One of the items that we look at is called type of neighborhood. Type of neighborhood is one of the criteria that is also with speed and with volume and with accidents. Those are the criteria that kind of determine it. So, I think what the mayor's saying is we would, we would start looking at it with a committee that would be with the police, the fire, engineering, maybe representative from the mayor and discuss whether or not this type of neighborhood needs it. That would be a first step. Once that was approved, we would, we would probably move on into looking to actually find out if the, if it meets the characteristics that we put in there for, for the other items such as volume and speed and accidents. So...
And we wouldn't do them on request. We wouldn't evaluate on request anymore. We would let police, fire and engineering look at that. And if we do put them in, this would be our new guidelines to go by. But we're still recommended to rescind it, meaning we don't have a speed bump policy anymore. But if, in fact, police, fire and engineering believe we need one, then we'll do one.
I've noticed some speed up going over the speed bump, allow the car to absorb the bump instead of slowing down and taking the full steering.
So, what would generate the committee to look at?
Sir?
Would it be an individual calling or a HOA sending or...
It could be either or. It could be you as a board member call and ask us to look at one. But absent of that, if somebody called and said, I want a speed bump, we don't do speed bumps anymore. Some of our sister cities are the same way. They don't do them anymore either. But now, if we think it's truly a safety issue and police and fire say, well, you know what, I can handle the delay in getting to the homes because this really is needed, then we'd go ahead and do it. But if you tell us, if you tell staff to look at one or recommend we look at one, we'll look at it.
But it's up to the committee to make that decision rather than having official policy on this is how we put one in.
Yeah, or rather than having Jane Citizen or John Citizen go out and collect all these signatures on their street from people they probably don't even know. That's just not a good way to do it. If it's truly needed, we'd do it. If it's not needed, we just rescind the policy and not do them.
Could the board override if they truly felt so?
The state law gives the city, the way the state law relative to municipalities and streets reads, is that the city has the power to exercise full jurisdiction in the matter of streets. And so, if there were no speed bump policy at all and the city decided to put in a speed bump, it has the power to do that. And ultimately, it would come, to answer your question, the board, you know, subject to the mayor's veto, subject to the board's override, always has authority to say what we do with streets. And so, yes, the board would have an ultimate control there. But you can put, the city could put in speed bumps where recommended by public safety and engineering without any speed bump policy at all. The policy was just a mechanism used to decide when and where to put them in. But I believe the mayor's recommendation is to repeal the policy and just look at them on a case-by-case basis when engineering and public safety recommend them.
So, in case it was actually needed, you couldn't get support from the mayor and still say, hey, we need one.
Mayor, we're going to do them if needed. It just begs the question of why one street and not the other. So, you know, same neighborhood, the same subdivision, why does John Smith Street have a speed bump and Sally Jones's street doesn't have one? I mean, they're all pretty much the same traffic. So... But we'll go by this criteria of high-volume streets and problems. And then again, police and fire saying it's worth, it's worth slowing down because this is a problem. Because there's some streets that's going to happen on. But again, we hadn't done but one in a year. And that's on Old Goodman Road. That's the last one we've done, the big wide one. Over close to the Schreiners building. That's the last one we've done.
I did have one before we get a second. This is just my curiosity. Andy, on something in lieu of speed bumps, if we go down this road, no pun intended, do the rumble strips work at all? Because, you know, sometimes you'll get off an interstate and you see those little white strips like six or seven in a row. Because I think a lot of people speed because they're just not aware of how fast they're going sometimes. And if they had a, that just little vibrating reminder, does that...
They're typically, they're typically used as you're approaching a stop sign. It's where you usually see the rumble strips. I've seen them put in cases where that's not the primary purpose. But if you're trying to get someone's attention, that's when you'd really want to put rumble strips up as you're approaching something, you know.
Unlike a speed bump, you've got the one bump. But if you got rumble strips, you got boom, boom, boom. And then the residents start calling saying, hey, I'm hearing all this noise repeatedly because now you've got three or four of them. That tire's going over and it's no ideal solution. But...
I want to make sure y'all are kind of aware that we do have the software and the equipment to be able to go out and determine, you know, if we really do have a speed issue on certain roads. And so, I mean, our data is really good when it comes back and it shows. We can put it out there for several days and it comes back and gives us good information. So, we've got the ability to look at any roads anytime, even whether it's not related to a speed bump or not, and just determine volumes and speeds and so forth on roads. So, that, it's a helpful tool.
Thank you. Is that a tool that y'all have or is that something that, let's say, y'all have an issue, you sort of, we got a speeding on the street.
Right.
Maybe some of y'all were coordinating with the police and say, look, this street is really high with speeders. Maybe you need to have traffic control over there to do what you can do.
Yeah, we do do that. So, we'll make them aware sometimes. We interact with them. They give us information on accidents. And when we determine that there is a high-speed problem, they'll sometimes go out and put up the sign that, that, you know, that puts the digital speed that they do. We do that quite a bit. That does help. And it does help. It helps reduce cars' speed because they know that we're aware of it and they know that we're watching it. So...
Mayor, I'm sorry. Excuse me. I'm sorry. Oh, you had a motion from Alderman Wallace, but I believe he's rewording his motion.
Okay, thank you. And obviously, the committee will always take the board input. If you've got a street that we need to look at, we'll look at it.
Okay, I have a question quite quick. If a subdivision decided they don't want the speed bumps anymore, how does this process work with another seventy-five percent? They could remove them, but I mean, I don't, can they go out and chisel them up or how do they...
Currently, currently, we require what percentage to remove them. It's seventy-five percent to put them down. I forget what percentage to remove them.
It's the same. It's just the reverse of the policies. We have to get seventy-five percent to vote to have them removed.
We would take them up. If seventy-five percent of the people on the street sign they want to remove, we'd take them up.
Hey, Andy, do you have, do you have any idea what it costs is? In Ridgeland, Mississippi, I'm down there. One of my sisters out and they have a road very similar to Old Goodman. And they have a thing up there that clocks you, tells you how fast you're going. You know, to me, that is, on a road like that, it'd be a great thing. You know, if you're doing thirty-five miles an hour, it shows you're going fifty. You know, you know, on a Roth Barnet, Russell would have one.
Right.
Yeah. Are those real costly?
They, they are, I believe, pretty costly to have. I mean, places that you typically see them are going to be where you're going to have a lot of pedestrian traffic or you're going to have conflicts, people on bikes and so forth. And you're trying to really get attention where it's real crucial that, that you're, that people observe the speed limit and stay within those limits. But, you know, we're very effective in what the police can move around to have the one that's mobile and...
Yeah, I know they have a mobile one. But I'm telling you, every time I go through there, you know, the first thing I do is, you know, it hits me and tells me how fast I'm going.
Right.
For me, you're going to do faster, you know. But I look down and make react. And I believe every person that does that. And so, I mean, we have chronic ones. To me, that would be a good, good answer for it. Like I, like I say, Old Goodman there, I had, a lot of people wore me out on that one, on those food bump. You had that. Mayor, I just didn't know how much it cost. But anyways.
Mayor, will you please repeat the motion?
The motion was from Alderman Wallace to go ahead and approve the request to rescind or retract the speed bump policy and do away with it the way it's currently operating. But at the same time, the committee, the police and fire and engineering would still hear your request from the board members or any staff request to look at them.
It's the same thing right here.
It, but to not have it as an adopted policy. You wouldn't, you would not have to have the whole citizen then process to have a speed bump.
We're rescinding it back to his.
It's the motion to repeal the speed bump policy.
Do away with our, do away with our formal policy and have the informal policy and looking at it by committee inside to where we can collect signatures and things like that anymore. And I do remember staff had talked about the key locations if we do look at it. It's going to be our school, heavy traffic areas, small roads, parks. We talked about the key items that we know are still going to come into play.
Even right here, if they voted, you look at the citizens, the ones who voted, like, if the neighbor inside went on the launch, then they have to, the city has to do it. So, it's...
P four, yeah.
I'd be surprised if anybody had paid in the water.
I don't know how we collect it.
But we're doing away with this particular policy, and we'll still, if that's the motion, rescind it. If there's a second, we'll...
I will, I will second Alderman Wallace's motion.
Mr. Earhart's second. Any more suggestions, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? So if the senate does something, we'll have, let's see, staff, we know, see over, I know, we'll do it. Number five, the mayor jumped on it, we covered that earlier, so that's already been covered. It is an honor as a city to have the lowest municipal property tax rate and the highest global assessed value of the city. So we're paying about thirty-four percent of local taxes. So when DeSoto County supervisors do good things, and they do, they're using one out of three. We're about priced one out of three dollars, not a must. When the school board builds something, does something good, one out of three tax dollars come out of the city while they branch, even though we're one of five cities. So that's an honor that we're able to do that and hep out the county and make it a stronger county and city. I believe we're at executive session time. Is there a motion to leave regular session with intention of going into executive session? Lamont, Mr. Victorson, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Collins, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Without a regular session, is there a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel matter in the airport department, personnel matter in the ambulance department, personnel matters in concession department, personnel matter in the dispatch department, personnel matters in the gas maintenance department, personnel matter in the police department, personnel matter in the street department, personnel matter in water pumping. Is there a motion to go into executive session for those items?
Aye.
Ms. Henderson's motion, is there a second? Is there a second, Mr. Wallace, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are in executive session.